Begin with a moment of silence in honor of all the veterans out there who have given their lives for this country. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselwoman Coby.
Present.
Councilman Vares.
Here.
Counselwoman Deppco.
Here.
President Delos is absent. Counsel, Counselwoman Katina?
Present.
Counselman Sarsfield?
Present.
Mayor Kavistic. Here. Albra, or you have a question?
Thank you. And just, President Delos is just feeling under the weather tonight, so our thoughts and prayers are with him. Is there any public comment on listed motions this evening? Seeing that there's no public comment on listed motions, we'll begin. Administration and Finance, Councilman Vares.
Motion A to approve the minutes from the council meeting on October eighth, two thousand and twelve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any comments? Seeing that there are no comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion B to approve the November bill list and bill list addendum.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any comments? Seeing that there are no comments, roll call vote please, Chief. Counselwoman Coby.
Yes.
Counselman Vares.
Yes.
Counselwoman Deppco.
Yes.
Counselman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Counselwoman Katina.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion C to advertise the two thousand and thirteen general fund budget, sewer fund budget, and liquid fuels budget.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, roll call vote please, Chief.
Counselman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Counselwoman Deppco.
Yes.
Counselman Vares.
Yes.
Counselwoman Coby.
Yes.
Counselwoman Katina.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion D to advertise borough ordinance number twenty-three seventy-eight in ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, continuing ordinance nine-eight-one of nineteen eighty-two as amended by borough ordinance twenty-three forty-four, providing for setting of Carnegie Borough's business privilege tax for the year two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, roll call vote please, Chief. Counselwoman Deppco.
Yes.
Counselman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Counselwoman Coby.
Yes.
Counselman Vares.
Yes.
Counselwoman Katina.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion E to advertise borough ordinance number twenty-three seventy-nine in ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, continuing the local tax-enabling ordinance number eight oh six, which are mechanical devices, number eight oh eight, real estate transfer, eight oh nine, earned income, number twenty-two seventy-nine, local services, as amended, number twenty-two eighty-four, occupation, number twenty-two eighty-five per capita for the year two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's no discussion, simple roll call vote will suffice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion F to advertise borough ordinance number twenty-three eighty, in ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, continuing ordinance number twenty-three eighty-six, providing for non-owner occupied dwelling registration for two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion G to advertise borough ordinance number twenty-three eighty-one, in ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, levying and accessing real estate taxes for general and specific purposes for the year two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Wait, Chief, this isn't the one that we talked about, ordinance twenty-three eighty-one? Okay, okay. This is being left on by the actual millage of the levy. There's gonna have to be a special meeting to pass that, because we won't know, the next meeting is December tenth, and the certified assessed values are not due from the county till December seventeenth, so we cannot calculate the millage until such a time. We're just gonna advertise the ordinance and make sure it's advertised, and there will be a modification to these advertised ordinance once we know what the millage is gonna be. Thank you, Mr. Sarsfield. Is there any other comments? Seeing that there are no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion, motion H to approve the lease agreement between the Borough of Carnegie and the Charleston West Council of Governments for office space known as Suite Two for a period of one hundred and twenty months, beginning December first, two thousand and twelve, and ending on November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion I to advertise, to authorize the Borough manager to advertise, interview applicants, and select a person for the position of part-time Borough custodian at a pay rate of fifteen dollars per hour, not to exceed twenty hours per week with no other benefits pending the results of a physical examination and drug screen.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion J to authorize the President of Council, Borough Manager, and Borough Solicitor to prepare and execute the documents necessary to obtain the two thousand and thirteen tax anticipation loan from PNC Bank in the amount of one million dollars at a rate of two point zero seven percent with no origination fees.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion K, motion to adopt resolution number two oh one-two dash seventeen, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, exonerating the two thousand and twelve Carnegie Borough Real Estate Tax for twelve Third Street, block and lot number one oh three dash C dash three-three-five upon closing of the sale of the property to Carnegie Borough.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are solicitors are coming?
I just wanna put on the record that this isn't the Borough exonerating somebody's taxes. The Borough is buying this property, and the twenty's wealth taxes are like seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, which in effect would mean the check that we write for, but for the property would be seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. It would circulate around just to come back to us, so we're just gonna stop it right here and we're not gonna pay the seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. But it would, but it's not giving somebody a tax break. It's giving the Borough itself a tax break.
Thank you, Mr. Delos Solicitor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Code Enforcement, Counselwoman Coby.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I have two motions this evening. Motion A to advertise a public hearing to be held on December tenth, two thousand and twelve, at six P M for the purpose of considering a comprehensive amendment to the Borough's zoning ordinance.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion B, motion advertise a public hearing to be held on December tenth, two thousand and twelve, at six thirty P M for the purpose of adopting the recertification code of ordinances and coincidental resolutions.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's no discussion.
Just, just wanna comment. On December tenth is our normal voting meeting, so it's, these meetings will both be happening right before our normal voting meeting on December tenth. It's a Monday night, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, so, even though it's a special meeting, it's the same night as our voting meeting.
And the hearings are to take information and general public comment on both the zoning orders, the comprehensive zoning order change and the recertification, which is, I don't know if anybody's aware there's a book of ordinances that the Borough has, and we're just updating the whole entire book, and then it's gonna go online. So there's a public comment on those two things at the hearing, and then the meeting that would follow at seven would be where they would be voted approved or disapproved.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Public Works, Counselwoman Deppco.
Motion to approve pay application number four in the amount of sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents payable to McAlroy Paving Company, Inc. for work completed on the Carnegie Park Days One project.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call vote on this one, please, Chief.
Well, I just wanna comment on that. I'm sure everybody has seen, you know, how nice the park is looking. It's fantastic for the kids. I mean, I've gotten nothing but positive feedback throughout the whole time. Things are looking good, and next year we need to get into Phase Two and then finally Phase Three. I just think that we'll have one of the stellar parks in the whole area. Very proud of it.
Thank you. Roll call, Chief.
Sorry for that typo, so.
That's okay.
Counselwoman Coby.
Don't let it happen again. Yes.
Counselman Vares.
Yes.
Counselwoman Deppco.
Yes.
Counselman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Counselwoman Katina.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve pay application number five, final, in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-one cents payable to McAlroy Paving Company, Inc. for work completed on the Carnegie Park Days One project.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there a comment? Seeing that there's no comment, roll call vote please, Chief. Counselman Vares.
Yes.
Counselwoman Deppco.
Yes.
Counselman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Counselwoman Coby.
Yes.
Counselwoman Katina.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve pay application number three, and final, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-one cents payable to Shields Asphalt Paving for the two thousand and twelve pavement maintenance program.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, roll call vote please, Chief. Counselwoman Coby.
Yes.
Counselman Vares.
Yes.
Counselwoman Deppco.
Yes.
Counselman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Counselwoman Katina.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve pay application number two in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-one cents payable to Soul Life Construction for work completed between July first, two thousand and twelve, and September thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, for the sanitary sewer repair contract A.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's no discussion, roll call vote please, Chief. Counselman Vares.
Yes.
Counselwoman Deppco.
Yes.
Counselman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Counselwoman Coby.
Yes.
Counselwoman Katina.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve pay application in the amount of nineteen thousand, one oh six, one hundred and six dollars and eighty-eight cents payable to Soul Life Construction for emergency repairs at the Washington Avenue and Tremble Avenue.
For the Washington Avenue.
Four, okay, four. Is it me? I mean, you were just trying to get me tonight. You just had to get me.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any comment on this discussion item? Seeing that there's no discussion, roll call vote please, Chief.
Counselwoman Coby.
Yes.
Counselman Vares.
Yes.
Counselwoman Deppco.
Yes.
Counselman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Counselwoman Katina.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve pay application number one in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents payable to J M F Underground, Inc. for the two thousand and twelve sanitary sewer repair contract B lining repairs.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussions? Seeing that there's no discussion, roll call vote please, Chief.
Counselman Vares.
Yes.
Counselwoman Deppco.
Yes.
Counselman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Counselwoman Coby.
Yes.
Counselwoman Katina.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve pay application number one in the amount of twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars payable to KDS Demolition for work completed on the Contract A demolition project.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any comment on this item? Seeing that there's no comment, roll call vote please, Chief.
Counselman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Counselwoman Coby.
Yes.
Counselman Vares.
Yes.
Counselwoman Deppco.
Yes.
Counselwoman Katina.
Yes.
Thank you. Not the under public safety tonight, Community Development, Counselman Vares.
Motion A to name Councilman Michael Sarsfield as the official delegate to all meetings of the Allegheny County Borough's Association.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's no discussion, roll call vote please, Chief.
Counselwoman Coby.
Yes.
Counselman Vares.
Yes.
Counselwoman Deppco.
Yes.
Counselwoman Katina.
Yes.
Counselman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion B to name Counselwoman Sue Deppco as the alternate delegate to the, to all meetings of the Allegheny County Borough's Association.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's no discussion, roll call vote please, Chief. Counselwoman Deppco.
Yes.
Counselman Sarsfield.
Yes.
Counselwoman Coby.
Yes.
Counselman Vares.
Yes.
Counselwoman Katina.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion C to authorize the President of Council to execute the supplemental reimbursement agreement and lobbying certification for the Tri-Community Revitalization Project.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion D to ratify the decision of the Planning Commission accepting the proposal from the Allegheny County Housing Authority to reconfigure the apartment complex at five fourteen Lydia Street, six-six dash E dash two-three-eight, and to utilize parcel sixty-six E dash two-five-eight for off-site parking, contingent on receiving correspondence for the Allegheny County Housing Authority configuration, the leash and oven entrance exit at Chestnut Street on the provided site plan.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any comment on this item? Seeing that there's no comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Well, now, I have community reports, Administration and Finance, myself. It, right now, times are tight for the Borough of Carnegie, going into the final few months of the year. We're still experiencing a real estate shortfall, and what we've collected as far as real estate taxes go, about two hundred thousand dollars. We're short at this point in time. Also because of the situation with CENTAX, as you know, CENTAX used to do our occupational, our per capita collection, our L S T, and our delinquent occupation tax, or the, uh, our delinquent working tax. The problem is that since CENTAX, they haven't gone into bankruptcy, but they're trying to reorganize at this point, and unfortunately. You're shaking. I said they haven't, but they're not reorganizing.
They're, they're not trying to reorganize. What they're doing is, there's a court order that came out last Monday, that I actually received today, that appointed a receiver who is going through the property, who is going through the tax rule, the taxes that they receive, because they're not assets of the company, they're assets of the clients, which are what we want, and they're getting those out. And there's other money that are in the accounts, they're trying to identify which of their clients that it goes to. But there's no bankruptcy, and it's a winding up, is what they're doing. CENTAX has done, it's going out of business. And just to that end, the Borough has moved all of its tax collection that was being done by CENTAX to Jordan upon finding out of the problems that CENTAX was having.
And right now, because of this ongoing situation, we're about two hundred thousand dollars late at this point in time for what we would have collected through OCC per capita and local sales tax. So that's obviously concerning at this point in time. And that's all I have to report for Administration and Finance. Code Enforcement, Counselwoman Coby.
We have no report this evening, Mr. Vice President. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works, Counselwoman Deppco. Thank you. Public Safety, Counselman Sarsfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. In last month's cog meeting, which you're a representative of, I spoke to Cog about the truck inspections and where they were. George, at the cog, and the cog as a whole assured me that they would continue to work on this. And at this point, I would hope that me and Mayor Kavistic could work together and have a collaborative effort so that we could, you know, help mainstream this and move forward on this. And I also received many compliments about Halloween and the job that our police department and fire department does, being out around the community, you know, with the lights and everything. We got a lot of outsiders from different communities, but they praise the work of our police and fire department, what they do. Also, it's not directly under public safety, but I wanted to applaud the American Legion for their flag retirement ceremony that was held a couple weeks back. It was just a beautiful ceremony, the first time I participated in such an event. I'm sure the mayor would have been there, but you were at the DFW flag ceremony and stuff, which, you know, I've gotten praises from that also. But I just wanted to congratulate the American Legion Post that they're doing a great job down there. And for veterans, I wanted to welcome home Bruce Schoolsby and thank him for his service to our great nation, and I just want to welcome him home, and any other veterans that have recently returned home here to Carnegie. And under the Shea Treaty Commission, we just planted twenty-five trees this past Saturday. I think once they get going, it's gonna be very aesthetically pleasing. We had about twenty-five, thirty volunteers to come out and help. I want to also thank Public Works. They were out there first thing this morning watering the trees to help them grow. So I think our community will look beautiful come springtime with the new trees and the existing trees that we have. And thank you, Keith.
Thank you. Community Development, Counselman Vares.
I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Do you have any, any reports for the Carnegie Room, our fire department, A M S, Counselman Sarsfield?
No, I haven't received any numbers from them.
Okay, thank you. Mayor's report?
The mayor's report for last month, we have criminal arrests and citations at twenty-three, traffic citations number twenty-seven, parking tickets one hundred and twenty-six, complaints and self-initiated activity from our department, and number nine hundred and fifty-seven calls. Uptick in calls, we had a little bit of uptick in calls last week in the, at the Carnegie Towers, and we are currently monitoring that relatively closely, so hopefully that's just a slight aberration, but we will continue to monitor that. The preliminary numbers on the Haunted Trail, the Haunted Trail did extremely well. I know next, next month Sue Deppco has a list, Counselwoman Deppco has a list of people she wants to thank. Before we get to that, though, I really want to sincerely thank Counselwoman Deppco and her family for all that they did, because it would have never happened without them. They threw it together in a couple weeks. There were a lot of people that helped out, but the two, her and her sister, me, especially, were the catalysts. And so many people stepped up to the plate to help just because of those two. And we're, we're lucky to have you guys, so thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Mayor, but don't thank me, thank everybody that helped, because I.
I'll let you do that.
I did it myself. I mean, it was a lot of people came together to help. Something's really great.
The feedback was excellent, and just some of the preliminary numbers, the total, the total revenue was six thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents that we have. We have a, the Borough, we borrowed four hundred dollars from the Borough to get the thing off the ground, so put us a gross revenue at about seven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Expenses to date right now, we're still waiting for a few receipts, but it's at one thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and one cent. So where we're at, we'll have the official numbers next month, once we get all the receipts in. But where we're at right now, we're at a profit of around six thousand dollars, actually five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. I think we'll be pretty close to that six thousand dollar mark by the time it's all said and done. But it was a, a nice event, and all that money, if anybody's wondering, goes to the skate park fund. Speaking of the skate park, we had a design meeting for the skate park, and that design meeting went very well. We actually had the big donor come in for the design meeting. Ken Schultz came in from San Diego to participate in a design meeting and to meet with people, which I thought was just unbelievable, that he could take the time to do that. Here's the preliminary numbers on the skate park. Right now, they're talking about a skate park that would cost about six hundred thousand dollars. Eighty-five percent would be put in by the Ken Schultz Foundation, which would take that to about five hundred, ten thousand dollars. Picture Park Foundation currently has about thirty-two thousand dollars, and there's possibly more depending on some unresolved issues with another community. The Haunted Trail brought in six thousand dollars. So that leaves us with about fifty-two thousand dollars that needs to be raised. Now, some of the, we have some fundraisers coming up relatively soon. The next, we have a direct appeal and some sponsorships and some in-kind donations that will all go towards the money that we owe there too. So if all goes well, this will be a, a park that really has very little, if any, taxpayer dollars in it, so that's a great, that's great news. As we all know, yesterday was Veterans Day, today's the day we, we celebrate it. And we, our veterans' flag ceremonies, as Counselman Sarsfield had said, have been extremely successful. They have ended for the season. The first ceremonies for two thousand and thirteen will be the week before Memorial Day, the Saturday before Memorial Day. We had six very poignant ceremonies this year to honor local veterans, and I really want to thank all those that helped out with the ceremonies. I want to thank the Boy Scouts, especially for those from Troop Eight Thirty-One who were there. Carlington High School's Mr. Todd Obodowski, the band director, he came down and played tabs for us a few times. And then he also sent one of his students, Madigan Greiner, a student at Carlington High School, to play tabs for us, so I really want to thank them. Also want to thank my wife who sang the National Anthem, and then without a doubt, I definitely want to thank the VFW Post Three Thirty-One for all their hard work in making this an extremely successful event. And without, and we can't forget to thank all the veterans' families who really gave us the privilege of flying their loved ones' flag in our Borough building, so we thank them very much for that privilege. Speaking of flags, we have a brand-new flag out there courtesy of Senator Montana's office. He donated a flag for the, for our municipal building, and the VFW Post Eight Thirty-One was kind enough to raise that flag on Veterans Day for us, and really, kind of an unofficial ceremony, but they went out there and raised it before any, any of their festivities, so I thank both of them for that. I also spoke with Fred Bingham during the rainstorms. He, he and I were in contact a few times, and he claims that the project recently completed at Campbell's Road there, below the bridge, below the Marrow Avenue Bridge, the one that cost about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, was very successful. He said it really allowed the water to flow freely into Sharp Tier's Creek, so it, it was a big plus. I mean, there's still a lot of issues down there, but that, that's one issue that we have solved at this time. I really want to thank, I really want to thank Congressman Murphy who secured that money, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, to get that work done, so I really appreciate that. Then also want to remind everybody that at the Andrew Carnegie Free Library and Music Hall this weekend, the producers will be running again this weekend, and from what I heard, it was just a fantastic show. the Producers will be running again this weekend, and from what I heard, it was just a fantastic show. I haven't gotten a chance to see it yet, I'm hoping to get there this weekend. And if anybody knows anything about that musical, it was recently, not too long ago, on Broadway. So good luck to Stage 62, and you can get tickets by going to stage62.org or calling the library, they'll point you in the right direction. Speaking about the nightlife here, I just want to point out something. I don't know if anybody's been aware of it, the nightlife in Carnegie has been growing, substantially growing. In the last couple of months, here's some of the things that you may have missed. We've had four outstanding plays at two theaters in the community. We've had three fabulous organ concerts at Sam's with Ann Seaton. We've had three art exhibit openings, including the 66th Annual Aquius International, and which, if anybody saw the article, got a really nice article, nice write-up in the Pittsburgh Tribune Review. We also had an awesome Polish festival, a Haunted Trail, and a host of other smaller events throughout the community. So the nightlife here in Carnegie has picked up, and it's really moved in the right direction. I also want to congratulate Key Environmental. If anybody read the post, is that about two weeks ago, three weeks ago? They picked their top workplaces in the area, and they named, once again, Key Environmental/FDS as one of their top workplaces. They're located right here in Carnegie, right on Third Avenue. And they employ, I think it's about 96 employees right now between the two companies. So, and they're all nice quality jobs, so we're glad to have them here in Carnegie. Congratulations to Sam Wilcox, I don't know if anybody knows Sam Wilcox, but he made his Eagle Scouts. He became an Eagle Scout this weekend. It was a beautiful ceremony, and I really want to congratulate his mother and father, especially Bridgette Van Dorn, because she took it upon herself, when this community scout, Cub Scouts had left this community, she took it upon herself to restart the Cub Pack years ago. And that Cub Pack is very strong right now, Pack 831, so it's a well-deserved Eagle Scout for Sam Wilcox and his family. And then, lastly, in conjunction with the CCDC, we are planning a church art and architecture tour, and that'll be on December 8th, and there'll be more information about that to come. But we welcome everybody to join us for the tour. It'll be on December 8th, starting around 9 o'clock, and it'll be $10 a person. So that's all I have today, Mr. President.
Thank you. General Public Comment, is there anyone wishing to come forward?
Believe it or not, I only have a ream of paper for you guys this evening. Keep it nice and short. Two items on my mind. First one is, Mr. Sarsfield, I want to thank you very much for coming to the fire department meeting. You had to know in advance that you were going to catch some flak. You're a good man, you represent the community well, and I appreciate you coming. And I know the firemen, even though they gave you grief, I know they appreciate you coming as well, so thank you very much. Second thing is, I'm sorry I was late, family obligations. And if bringing up something that you've already covered, I apologize. Just wondered what the status of the ordinance for the fire department is.
Mr. President, if I could comment on that, since he gave me such kudos for attending the meeting. Yeah, I will give an update. I spoke with Chief Candraks on Tuesday, and he assured me that everything that was to be given to the bookkeeper was given. And at that point, I said, we should be moving forward with this ordinance. Everything was given. Well, contrary to the fact, there's still an outstanding list of unanswered questions, things that she still needs to do before a budget of any sort could be prepared. So there's some miscommunication. She emailed that to President Koche of the long list, long laundry list of items that are still outstanding. So until all of those are met, we can't pass an ordinance.
I'm a little bit confused. I remember, it's going back a few months, but it was elect officers at the fire department, regular meetings, change their bylaws, and the ordinance was supposed to happen. The ordinance provided a bookkeeper for the fire department that the Borough was kind enough to pay for.
With financial reporting?
With financial, yeah, the whole deal. And at some point in time, there was an agreement, I can't remember which of the council was involved, assuming you were, Mikey, that the bookkeeper would be moved in front of the ordinance. And the fire department approved the bookkeeper. What did the ordinance happen next? I mean, her doing work, what have you, is supposed to... I mean, to my mind, it's a byproduct of the ordinance providing the bookkeeper, and then she begins to work, and...
Well, I don't know if we want to get into the entire delusion, but certainly one of the issues was us not paying the fire department's solicitor bill, okay? And in retrospect, I think, well, if we would have been giving them the money, the solicitor would have been paid. But then comes to my attention, there's an account with $23,000. The solicitor bill's $1,800. What is the concern with us paying that if there's an account with $23,000 sitting there that should be paid? I don't understand what the holdup of us having to give money to pay this solicitor bill if there's an account with $23,000 sitting there. And for the meetings, every meeting that we've attended, myself and Councilman Vares, the accounting was always that there was only $9,000 there. Where does $23,000 come from?
I'm not an officer, so I can't answer the financial question. I just...
Right, that's what I'm saying, I don't know to get into the initial of everything, but just to kind of...
To answer your question, to answer your question, I believe we're waiting on some financials before the ordinance is passed, because the expectation was that the bookkeeper would get in there and start to provide us some current financials. And to this point, we have yet to say anything.
I go back to my original point. Richard, who's not here this evening, said to me at one point in time that the fire department was not acting in good faith because they didn't advance the approval of the bookkeeper in front of the ordinance, as had been agreed upon, that they would present it to the membership of the fire department, and then the fire department would vote on it, which subsequently they did, and approve it. And the next domino fall would have been the ordinance. Not understanding why any issues relating to findings falls in front of good faith as...
Well, the reporting mechanisms, we were expecting reporting mechanisms in place before the ordinance was passed.
She was hired on October 18th, the day that originally, I think it was October 18th, the day that she was originally supposed to be voted on by the fire department, but they delayed because of the ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. A wicked web that's been woven, and there's nothing...
She's been trying to get some information from them, and I believe she's getting, she's making some progress with them, but there's still a lot of unanswered questions in the most recent email that she sent to President Koche, and myself, and I forwarded it out to everybody else, so they could see exactly what was still needed at this point in time, because she's trying to assemble some sort of reporting, like I said, reporting mechanism for all of us, so that we can review it and make it an honest decision, since this is, we have fiduciary responsibility, obviously, to the citizens of Carnegie. And I think that's very important, before we go ahead and passing any ordinance, that we see firsthand exactly everything that, all of their financial reporting in place. And I believe that's very important to everyone that sits up here.
I don't discount the importance of honest financial reporting either. Would expect that it would be part of the work product that the young lady would provide to everyone. The question that I'm raising, though, goes to what you said about good faith. The membership was expecting the ordinance to follow the approval of the bookkeeper, because that's what was advertised.
I don't think that there's anything significant about the holdup for the ordinance, other than I think council views it as a ceremonial, almost, end of this whole process. And I think council's view is that once we're sure that this is going to work, is when we pass the ordinance. The fire department, I think, is looking at it as some measure of good faith from the Borough's point of view. I don't think it's really either one. The ordinance basically, is all it's going to do is recognize the fire department. If the council would pass it in January, decide it rescinded in February, it really wouldn't give the fire department any more security. I think when everything, I think when everything is working, and we know that this new structure is going to work, I think council views that as the time that the ordinance gets passed. It really, I mean, it needs to be done if this is going to continue in this process. But I don't think there's anything significant or insignificant about not having it passed at this point in time. I don't think it's, you know, I think it's a punctuation to the process where we believe that the fire department is up and running in good hands and going to continue that way. That's the way I think council views it, and it's a little different than I think the way the fire department views it.
Probably be if you're able to make the meeting, it's going to make a good explanation.
Yeah, and just so you know, since Tuesday, I have attempted to call the chief six times, haven't heard back from him on once.
Should probably be calling Koche.
He's out of time. So...
By the way, you didn't answer the call, so...
That's kind of weird inside, so... But I'll be at the meeting as always, and...
I look forward to seeing you there. I appreciate your honesty, Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stan.
Any other public comment? Seeing that there's no other public comment, we'll go into Council Gordon Welfare, Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes. Just real brief, the mayor touched on some things that were happening in the Borough. I've actually attended two productions off the wall, and they were just extremely great. Just one this weekend, another one a couple of weekends ago. Planning on going to the library this coming weekend. So they are great events, something to really be proud of. But I want to thank our brave warriors, men and women, that grant us these opportunities, this very opportunity to sit here this evening and conduct business. If it wasn't for these warriors, none of this is possible. That's why we have the American Creed hanging there, to keep in our hearts and minds of what our men and women do for us each and every day. I think so many times it's taken for granted. I never do, my head never hits Phillips. I thank God for our brave men and women. My father served in World War II, my brother-in-law in Vietnam, my brother and sister-in-law in the Marine Corps. And I thank them, and applaud them, and applaud all our brave men and women. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Decker?
Just want to wish everybody a blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilman Covey?
Yes, I want to also wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, but I do have a few things. The Saturday after Thanksgiving, which will be Saturday, November 24th, Santa comes to town, 12 noon here at the Borough Building. I'll show him, receive a toy from Santa and a treat bag full of goodies, so again, that's 12 noon, Saturday. If you're a child, you can have one, sure, Saturday the 24th. And then, two weeks later, on Friday night, the 7th, will be Light Up Night, and that'll be at the parking lot at the PNC Bank, where the big tree is. We'll be having to help you stay warm, hot chocolate and coffee for the adults, and cookies. Once again, Santa will come, we'll sing some Christmas carols, so please come out and join us for these two nights. Also, real quickly, and Chief, please correct me if I'm wrong, because Chief never gets to say anything, please don't forget Toys for Tots, that's Chief's big, one of his big things. And we have been, when I say we, you and Carnegie, haven't we been one of the top toy providers for the past however many years?
About seven years.
In the top 10, top three, I mean, we're right up there.
We are right up there.
Okay, please bring a new unwrapped toy, and bring it here to the Borough Building. And I also want to wish everyone, especially my favorite Marine, Chief Harbin, the happy Veterans Day, so... And everybody take care, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you. Councilman Vares?
Last election day, we had 3,400 people voted in Carnegie. That's three times more than we normally have. So I want to thank everybody for coming out and voting, and it turned out to be a pretty good day.
Thank you, Councilman Vares. And I would just like to say that, obviously, yesterday was Veterans Day, today we celebrated Veterans Day. For those of you that don't know it, though, I have the privilege of sitting up here with three of my colleagues that are veterans. Obviously, Chief Harbin, Solicitor Lucas, and the man that sits in this chair, Councilwoman President Richard Delosse is also a veteran. So I would just like to say thank you to these gentlemen for their services, and to all of the other veterans that have served our country in the past and continue to serve our country moving forward. Thank you, gentlemen.
And I have to say, I knew Rick wasn't here, but I forgot, I'm so sorry, Jed.
Sorry, Jed.
Okay.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and have a happy Thanksgiving, a blessed Thanksgiving. Realize that when you sit there on Thanksgiving with your families, you really have something to be thankful for, so... Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So move. Thank you, thank you for coming, everyone.